Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Joint Workshop with the Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights Community Redevelopment Area Board, Advisory Board, as well as with the City Commission, who will be sitting as the City Commission as well as the CRA Board. Today, we're going to be having an update on what the status of the Board is now doing, and seeing that the CRA will be sunsetting in the fall of next year, wanted to discuss some ideas going forward and how we can progress in moving forward with the agenda of the CRA. So having said that, Madam City Manager, or are we handing it over to Clarence? Clarence?
Yes, we are handing it over to Clarence.
Okay. I think we're getting a lot of feedback on the microphones. All right. Clarence?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, rest of the staff. As you know, every year, typically in the beginning of the year, we usually have a joint workshop with the Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights Advisory Board and the Board of Commissioners, just to kind of give some direction, introduce new board members. And I don't know if at this time, it would be appropriate just to acknowledge our advisory board.
So why don't we have the Chair call the role of the advisory board and see if we have a quorum?
So our Chair is not here. Our Chair is actually home sick with COVID.
Okay. Is there a Vice Chair?
Vice Chair, he timed out. He's no longer able to serve. He served out his terms.
So there is no Vice Chair?
We haven't had the opportunity to elect the Vice Chair yet.
So do you want to take on responsibility of calling the role? That would be great.
Yeah, we can call the role. I'll let our Clerk, Madam Clerk, do that.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please call the role of the CRA Advisory Board?
I'll call the role for the Commission's Office first. Commissioner Herbst, not present. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here.
Commissioner Sturman?
Here.
Mayor Trentalis?
Here.
All right. I have Michael Lewin, not present. Christopher Murphy, not present. Stefan Lu?
Here.
Lisa Crawford, thank you. Rhoda Glass, oh, that's the one who's not here. Rhoda's not here. And then I also have Kenneth Calhoun, thank you. Alfredo Alvero?
Here.
Thank you. John Quahley?
Here.
Thank you. Noel Edwards, not present. Sonia Burrows?
Present.
Thank you. And Jenny Basink, not present. That's it.
Do you have a majority present on the CRA Advisory Board here?
Yes. Yes, we do.
What's the, it's 10? Yeah, so we have six.
Out of 10, right?
Yes, and I think we do have one other board member that's outside on this way.
Stefan.
Oh, okay, there he is, Stefan.
Okay, then let us proceed. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but it's important to take the role. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. So again, this is our opportunity to have our Board members, Advisory Board members, meet with the Board of Commissioners to kind of chart our direction and our path. One of the conversations, or topics of conversations, that we've been having at the Board meetings is the status of the CRA, obviously, and whether the CRA will continue or sunset next year, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, next fall. So we have a presentation that basically gives some of the highlights and achievements of the CRA. It also gives some financial information, and we'll let that roll and have some discussion if you guys have any questions.
And it gives headfirst.
Oh, there you go. All right, so, okay, I'm in charge of this. All right, so CRA incentives, what this is, is a snapshot of the accounts, the CRA incentive accounts, and what it shows is our completed projects, the projects that are in progress, and the amounts that we funded from 2017 up until 2024. The estimated amount is about $95 million in a number of different projects, and we'll kind of walk through that. So affordable housing and market rate housing, that's actually underway. You're familiar with the Adderley, where we gave $12 million for a project that has about 425 units, 18,000 square feet of ground floor retail. The Arcadian, $10 million. That project has over 500 units and about, 500 units and about 14,000 square feet of ground floor retail. The gallery at Fat Village, the CRA provided 1.9 million, with the city adding another $600,000 for a $2.5 million investment in that project, which has about 280 units, 280-plus. And then Mount Herman, which is due to open within like the next two months or so. That was a 9% tax credit deal for elderly, where we provide the local area government match, which actually comes from the city.
So Clarence, when you say accomplishments, these are just, these are just projects that are currently underway. We've had a lot more accomplishments than this.
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna go through them.
No, I understand that, but the slide suggests that these are the only accomplishments, but we have a lot more accomplishments than this.
Absolutely.
Okay. So these are just the current ones that are underway, still under construction?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Completed housing developments, River Garden Town Homes, and I don't want to hit every one, but as you can see, these are projects that have been completed to your point, your earlier point. River Gardens, which is 25 townhomes, 613, 142 units, Seven on Seven, which is an affordable housing development where we just provided a streetscape incentive, Dixie Court Apartments, Northwest Gardens, Sweeting Estates, which were single-family homes. I think it was 11 single-family homes there. The Model Home Project in Dorsey River Bend neighborhoods, 15 homes constructed, and Progressive Point Apartments. If you recall, we had 46 infill lots that we put out for bid. We had about 20 contractors to submit their qualifications. We selected five. We have, at this point, 25 completed and 10 underway.
So completed housing projects, there's some missing here. For example, Soleil, formerly known as Jefferson Place, received CRA funds. Why isn't that on here?
We scrubbed, well, we didn't scrub everything.
What does scrubbing mean?
Meaning, we went through all of our list of projects, the actual finance accounts to look for projects. Some of them may not have made it to this list. There are a lot, a lot of other projects that probably aren't represented here, but we thought we'd just give the highlights or just a snapshot of some of the accomplishments. This isn't exhaustive.
So this is not an exhaustive list of the completed housing projects?
No, it's not.
This is just an example of a few?
Yes. Because it would have been really long.
The reason I want to bring this up is because it's really misleading to the public that sees this for the first time. Because the previous slide says accomplishments, which is not the accomplishments, those are just accomplishments underway, and the completed housing projects, there are far more projects that we've been involved with than just the ones listed here. So in fact, to the tune of, how many millions of dollars in your previous slide?
95.
Yeah. So this comes nowhere near the 95 million that we've been involved with. I just want the folks to know that our CRA has been very aggressive in trying to provide housing and other kinds of economic development opportunities through the CRA approach, and I think it's unfortunate that, you know, you're showing just a small number of projects when we've been very, very aggressive as a city in trying to implement change in that particular CRA that is not really reflected here. So I just want the people to know that there's a lot more here than meets the eye.
Absolutely, and if we were to be exhaustive and try to get every one, then this definitely would have been a very long presentation, and we had brevity in mind, but given the flavor of exactly what we've been able to do, I think it shows where it was from 2017 up until now is what that list that showed the amount of money that we actually put into developments, so.
So this is just a snapshot from 2017?
Up until now.
Okay.
Yes.
Clarence, I have one question on this page that you just covered. So it says that we're going to do infill housing on 46 lots.
Yes.
So the numbers there add up to 35, so what's with the 11 remaining? What's up with those lots?
So when we, when we released that solicitation for contractors, again, we limited the number of contractors that we would actually contract with to five. So the idea was to give each contractor five lots, and depending on whether or not they completed them, they would get the opportunity to get an additional five. So there are, there are three that actually completed all of their, all of their first five. Some have chosen not to move forward with an additional five because the prices at that time were so low, when I say prices, I'm talking about the cost for the homes. They were so low, and expenses for building have gone so high, they say it's not worth it for them, you know, to get the additional five.
So what are we, what are we doing with those? There's 11 lots then that are not, that are going to just sit there?
No. We do, we are working with a nonprofit to, because they can build a lot cheaper. The idea is to come back to you and ask whether we raise the sales price, or we do another solicitation to be able to put out the ones that are remaining.
Okay, so there are plans for those other 11 lots?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Clarence, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The nonprofit that you're giving reference to, were they a part of that initial grouping?
No.
So this is?
And so that's why we, we will have to, at some point, do another solicitation.
Okay, thank you.
And again, some of these accomplishments, it's not exhaustive, but to give a snapshot and not be here all day, some of the commercial developments that we've been able to do that we want to highlight, the L.A. Lee YMCA Mizel Center, $10 million investment, and what it shows up under that caption are some of the additional businesses that we funded to be able to occupy some of the commercial space at the L.A. Lee YMCA. Thrive Progresso is a wonderful commercial development where we had investors that went in and they cleaned up an area, you're all familiar with what that space was like, and this is what it looks like now. And up under that caption is a number of businesses that we were able to provide additional funding for their build out as well. More on the commercial, on the commercial front, Sisdrunk Marketplace, which you see here, and I should mention that the L.A. Lee YMCA was awarded the FRA's top development project maybe two years ago. In addition to that, Sisdrunk Marketplace also won an FRA award, so a lot of our projects have been recognized statewide, and I should say, the L.A. Lee YMCA was recognized nationwide. It got an award as well. I can't remember the organization, but we went to Denver to receive an award there. This also lists some of the other projects that we provided funding for. Hoover Canvas Products, Jack and Jill. So this is a property business improvement program. Donna Caribbean, which is the new Caribbean restaurant that's down on Sisdrunk, and again, a list of a number of different projects that we funded, you know, here within the Sisdrunk Quarter. More accomplishments, these are capital projects, the Streetscape Improvement Project, $490,000, off-street parking, we built a number of parking lots that's on Sisdrunk, where we are beginning to take another look at how we provide parking within the Quarter, and that'll be a conversation to come up, and I'll try to do that quickly as well. Sisdrunk Enhancement, Phase 1 and Phase 2, actually what that is, the relocation of power lines, high-tension power lines on a piece of property that was owned by the city that we conveyed to a developer to do another 160 units of housing right on Sisdrunk. And then the infrastructure project, the Sisdrunk Infrastructure Project that brought in the new Streetscape Program with the new lighting sidewalks and everything that you see on Sisdrunk Boulevard, that helped to transform what the Boulevard looks and feels like.
Clarence, I have a question.
Yes.
When you just talked about Thrive, so in that area, I hear a lot about how we need to improve sidewalks and connectivity and lighting.
In process.
Is that in process for the area?
In process, yes.
Because that has been so well done in terms of what the developers brought to that site, but we just need to enhance it. So that's in process?
Right.
Okay.
It's actually in process, yes.
Okay.
We're working, we're working with, with our Public Works Department to actually get those improvements done.
Okay, thank you.
So these are projects, again, that are in the pipeline, actually being, they're funded, and they're in some stage of the development process. We anticipate the All Ridge and the Laramore to actually break ground at the end of the year, so that will actually finally break ground. A number of them have, well, the major difficulty in a lot of these projects is parking. So while we are funding new projects that's going on Sisdrunk, to alleviate the parking concerns, these projects have parking, built-in parking, in which, you know, structured parking is supreme expense when you're talking about development. So we may have to come back on one or two of these projects to add additional funding because of the parking and the cost, but these are a list of projects that are ready to move right now, and they're in several different stages of development. And I also want to mention Provident Park here, the Provident Park improvements. I think that's important to mention because what we're doing in transforming Provident Park is also going to, it's going to allow for some of the entertainment aspects that we want to see within the park. It'll have an amphitheater, it's going to have a splash park, you know, so.
It's going to look nice.
It's going to be really, really nice.
It'll look really nice. Remind me again what this project is, and that right here on the top, which one is that?
Wright Dynasty.
That's the Wright Dynasty?
Yes, yes. It's the 25 units of housing, which is one of the projects that we're going to probably come back to you about because of the parking situation. So we'll talk about that at some other point in time. Again, so here are potential projects that we have. When we talk about sunsetting, these, these projects would be the opportunity, the opportunities that we'll have to forego if we are not able to move forward. And as you can see.
We don't have that slide.
It's right here.
It's page four of 13. I think maybe they.
It's page four?
Moved them around.
Okay, back to page four. Okay.
So these are just a list of projects that potentially can be funded, you know. We've been working with the developers and can't make any commitments to them at this point, but we are keeping them close, just in case we are able to continue with the work that we're doing. This is the fiscal year 2025 proposed budget, where we look to have about $28 million. $17 million of that would go towards incentives. Some possible options with respect to sunsetting. One of the things that we would suggest is that regardless as to whether or not we are able to keep the funds in the trust fund, extending the CRA just to complete all of these projects that are in process in the pipeline, which is what we did similarly to the Central Beach CRA. Just continue so that we can finish these projects. We've been in conversations with our counterparts over at the county, and they are on board with the idea of just completing what we started. So there are some other options that we don't necessarily have to go into right now, but just to give some food for thought on extending the time maybe for a shorter life instead of the full complement of 30 years. The CRAs based on Florida statute are due to sunset, all CRAs, in 2039, so, but I think they do provide some wiggle room, you know, so that it can go a little longer, but just extending it for an additional 10 years is an option, changing the boundaries to exclude certain areas is an option, and then maybe just having a portion of the city's contribution, maybe 50% instead of the 95%, which is provided. So that really is, all right, the presentation.
Thank you so much, Clarence. Great job. I mean, the things you've been doing since, especially since you've been here, and the diversity of projects has just been great. You know, when I was first a Commissioner in 2003, we were barely getting off the ground in Flagler Village, Flagler Heights.
Right.
And now that I see so much happening west of the tracks, it makes me feel good as a, you know, as someone who's helping to, you know, work with you and making things change, you know, you've done a really, really good job, and I commend your staff. I commend the Advisory Board for all the work that you've done, putting, putting your time and effort into directing some of these projects and helping to steer, you know, what's appropriate and what makes sense for the, for the Northwest. So is there anyone on the CRA Advisory Board that wants to add to Clarence's comments today? Any questions or any comments? Okay. Anyone from, Sonya?
Is this about his presentation or in general?
I'm sorry?
In general or just about his presentation, are you saying?
In general.
Okay.
I couldn't imagine you wanting to remain silent.
This isn't in general, but it was one of the projects that was mentioned, the Mount Herman Affordable Housing Development, that he said would be completed in about two months or so. I have been getting so many calls from community members, elderly people over 65, 60, and I think this starts at 62, about availability. If they're going to be leasing in two months, surely they have started the application process. And I had been asking for the last four months or better, our community always gets behind the eight ball.
Which project?
Mount Herman Development.
I'm sorry?
The Mount Herman Senior Citizen Development.
Oh, the Mount Herman, okay.
Yes. And when they were developing Flagler, by the time anyone in our community found out about the affordable housing, they were all filled. So we were, I was desperately, because people keep asking me, Sonya, we know you're on the CRA, I'm like, I don't know, they're not telling us anything. For like four months, and now, I don't know if it's because the meeting was today, because I've gotten several phone calls last week that, wow, information's starting to come out, they're putting out applications, well, because we got a meeting next week, you know, but if they're, if they're opening in two months, I know the application process has started before now.
Has, have we, are we in control of that, projects? We're not in control of that, no?
I spoke to Mount Herman because a couple people told me, they were given a number, they called the number, it just rings busy, and someone else said they called and they were told, you have to contact Mount Herman. I spoke to Mount Herman, they said, no, it's the developer.
So you're getting to run it around?
Yeah, it's ridiculous. And, you know, I just feel bad because they see, our community see this redevelopment in our area, and they're shut out, and we're not asking for preferential treatment, we just want fair treatment. If the application process started three, four months ago, we're just asking for fair.
Okay. Is there anyone from Mount Herman here who can speak on? You were all raising your hands. I don't know what that was about. Okay. All right.
I did ask some people to, I did ask some of the people that applied to come, if they wanted to say anything.
Okay. Is there anything else you wanted to comment on? Sonya?
No, not right now.
Okay. All right. Clarence, do we have any kind of response for that?
Yes. So all of those people were raising their hand, and that's actually staff back there, and Janelle Adderley is our marketing person, who has way before last week been reaching out to Mount Herman, and this is good because it actually leads into what we want to talk about, that next bullet in our agenda, where we talk about community development, and that first bullet is information dissemination. We call it information dissemination, and what that essentially is, is we want to come to you and ask for some funding to be able to do what the FRA titles or categorize our ability to be able to go out and do events, which we are no longer able to do, but what they say we can do for the last two years that we've gone there and tried to get clarification, they say we can do information dissemination projects, or what we call events, not events, but campaigns, information dissemination campaigns or workshops. And why that is important is because of what Ms. Burrows is saying. Not only is she getting a bunch of calls, we've been getting calls, and we've been reaching out to our developer partners and trying to get information, and it's been just as hard for us to get it as it is for her.
So obviously, there's something going on here. I would hate to think that the people who are running this, making this an inside kind of operation where they just want their friends and families to be able to apply first, obviously that's not appropriate. How are we going to, if in fact this situation is? What, how are we going to, if in fact this situation is, is these, is occurring, what, what approaches do you think we can now take to try to remedy this?
So again, we have, we have made contact with the, the folks on the ground that actually make, make decisions.
Right.
They didn't want, I'm not saying when we were reaching out that we didn't get any, any, we didn't make contact at all. What they would tell us is that we're not at that stage yet, we're not ready to be able to start marketing and putting out information. We have made it very clear to them that we wanted to be able to work with them to market the rental of these units. They're not finished yet. When I say, you know, they may be ready in about two months or so, we are, we are working with them on a marketing campaign.
I don't think you need a marketing campaign.
We don't.
I think you've got people lined up already.
Yeah, but, but then, who, who are they? That's, that's, that's to her point, who are they? So when we talk about doing information dissemination, one of the things that we, we ask for them to do is to allow us to be able to get the word out before they put it out globally. And if we're able to, to market those units and they won't, they won't allow us to have a set aside of a certain amount of units. You know, and I, I say that, but we've asked that they make sure.
Isn't it a first come, first served basis?
That, that's really what it is. So what we want to do is we want to be able to market to the folks in the redevelopment area before it goes again globally, so that we can ensure that folks from the neighborhood get an opportunity. We can't guarantee any number of units or slots, but what we want to be able to guarantee is that they at least get the opportunity to go and sit down and apply because they have to meet certain criteria.
I, I understand that, but the thing is that, you know, if they are in fact ready to open in two months, they have to be available to give people the keys on day one. And sometimes people who may qualify need to get out of their existing situation and need time to plan. And it, it doesn't just happen, I mean, the fact that they're saying that they're not ready, I'm concerned. More because it sounds like they're not, I mean, what kind of administration do they have that they are not able to operate this in the most efficient way possible? I'm very concerned, not just for this project, but for any similar project.
So then, that's why we're covering and, and we want to talk about at some point, setting some money aside to do information dissemination because we do have a lot of developments that will be coming online and we want to be able to get out in front of it.
Clarence, when we do, if we award funds, in, in this case for Mount Herman, I think it was $640,000.
Yes.
When we award funds, why do we not have in the agreement or the contract with whoever we're awarding funds to, exactly what's going to happen? In other words, how they are going to advertise, how they are going to solicit applications? Excuse me? Do we have a process in these agreements that spells out exactly what we've been talking about here for the last 15, 20 minutes?
Yes, we do. We, with, with the ones that we really, I mean, we actually provide incentives to like the Adderley, the Arcadian, where we're providing real CRA money. You gotta remember what this project is, this is a tax credit project. And all they were asking for us was the local area match, which we, we discussed before, which is the $640,000 where when they go to the state, they have to have a match. We, 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 we didn't even have our agreement with them at the time, we just made the commitment. We made the commitment to, to be able to fund it because they have to go, potentially they'll go two or three times in order to get awarded funding. So that was just a commitment until they actually were able to get the credits. And from, from the time that they actually did receive the credits up until now, which, you know, we're still working to get them the funding, we did have information within our LOI that spoke to joint marketing. But again, because it's a tax credit project, they're, they're, they're limited in a lot of the things that they actually can do with respect to talking about setting aside units and all of those other different things. But with our new projects, the Arcadian and all of these others that we're providing real money to, we have in those agreements stronger language, you know, that talks about making sure residents within the redevelopment area have the first opportunity to be able to, you know, sign up and rent those apartments.
I'm not even talking about actually like sign up, who's first, I'm just talking about you lay out a timeline. You, you let people know that this is the, this is the timeline, this is how, this is going to be advertised, this is how it's going to be marketed, how it's going to be promoted, how people can, you know, get an application. I mean, just the process should be, it should be, and I, and I understand what you're saying that, you know, we have 640,000 and, you know, compared to other projects, that's not a huge number. But still, I just think in every project we do, it should be really explained exactly how the public is going to be able to take advantage of, of what's being offered, that's all.
Yeah. One of the examples of how we've actually been able to do that is River Garden Townhomes. They allowed us to market and advertise within the redevelopment area. I think it was like three months before they actually went to the, to the wider community and marketed and advertised. It's the same thing that we put in, in, in these agreements where we are providing incentives, real money to other developers. Janelle is here and, and again, what's kind of a moving target with some of these developments is when they're going to be able to, you say, set out a timeline, that's, we've been finding that kind of difficult. And maybe Janelle can just give you a, a quick, you know, explanation of what she's been encountering as she reach out to these different developers to get them to do exactly.
Before, before the commissioner, do you have a question?
I had a couple of questions before Janelle speaks. Mr. Wilson, you gave reference to saying that you asked to be allowed for the community to be informed before it goes globally. Yesterday, we were, our office, we received the documentation that this was going. You can now see about, see the information regarding the project, what is available first, the one versus the two unit, two bedroom units. Is this right now exclusive to the city or is this global? Because you said we asked for a community first.
I, I don't think they, have they started marketing to everybody yet, they have not, right? Janelle?
Good morning, my name is Janelle Adderley. We spoke with Mount Herman on Friday and they told us they were going to be starting applications on Monday. I don't know if it's globally, however, as soon as we got word, we started informing people. We put it on the city, the CRA's website, I didn't put it out on the city's website yet only because I'm trying to, you know, make sure people in the area know first. However, we've already started distributing flyers, we sent the email to our board members on Friday too. And we're gonna continue to send it out, we sent it to the local HOAs and we actually printed out flyers ourselves. So internally, the CRA is trying to get the word out, but I can't say for sure if, you know, Mount Herman itself has sent it out globally or not.
Well, I don't think the issue is just that, it's like the flyer goes out, they get a phone call, a phone number, but no one's answering. That's the issue.
Well, they did inform us that they, they hired one particular young lady, which we have the contact information for, who's gonna be accepting applications by appointment only. I can communicate with her again and let her know, she's just one person, so she may not be able to answer the phone. They have an office set up, but you know, right now, how they want to operate is by appointment only.
Can we just follow up on that?
Sure, I'll do that.
I think that's all we're asking right now, okay.
Absolutely, we will, but it, it belies the point that within our agreements, we do have language that speaks, that speak to us or the CRA being able to market to our, our caption area first. And then afterwards, they can, you know, market globally. But the way in which we've been able to ensure that people know, because, because we, we get it all the time, you know, when we put stuff out on social media or any of the traditional platforms, people will tell us that they didn't know and didn't hear. What we found worked, that what we found that did work was when we were, when we did our Finally Friday events, it was amazing to be able to, and I'm not asking that we do Finally Friday. I'm saying having those information dissemination workshops or whatever, where we invite folks to come out, have some food, maybe play some music or whatever. It actually works because they come and, and it's a wonderful thing. People in the neighborhood, they do come to these, what we're gonna call workshops and they get the information without a doubt. So that's why we, we have on here doing information dissemination.
So what you're suggesting with the Adderley, the Arcadian, the Latimer and those that are coming up, that's the, the method that you want to move forward on?
Yeah, because we've been getting questions about all of those. What we haven't, what we haven't got as of yet are the criteria and the requirements for those new projects. And once we get, once we get those requirements and, and the criteria to go into those products, we want to be able to, you know, get it out to residents.
Okay, um, yes, Sonya, could you stand up? Not that we can't not hear you, but.
Sorry. For the record, I, Clarence and I did speak because I know that we're limited on the activities we can do through the CRA. So I did suggest to him, because I've been getting so many calls and spoke to our board members at the Fort Lauderdale Negro Chamber of Commerce. We are right on the corridor and we have a big parking lot. And I did offer, I said, I would be willing to partner with the CRA to provide a tent and maybe some hot dogs to get people to, so we could give them the information. Because I know you can't, we can't spend the CRA money on that. But we, it's just important to us to get that information out to the community. We would be willing to do that and to give them time to get whatever documents they need. I, you know, we, they don't know the criteria, we just want them to know what the criteria is well in advance so they can gather whatever documents they need, it's gonna probably take some people some time or even to see if they qualify or not. The Negro Chamber of Commerce is willing to do that, to get the word out on the street. We did speak about that, thank you.
Very good. Mayor?
Yes, Clarence.
Mayor, I just had a couple of questions for Clarence, if we're, if we're gonna still be able to ask questions. Thanks. So Clarence, could we just look at exhibit one on page, page two of 13? And I know we've had this discussion in the past, but now that we're getting to the point where we're facing a sunset date of just a little over, I guess, a year, year and a half. If you look at this page, are you able to tell me if we can just get a little bit deeper into these numbers, how many dollars have actually been allocated that have not been spent at all yet, at all?
So if you look at what's in the red, we have the dollars that have been completed. Eight million dollars are in progress.
But eight million dollars out of that 39 and the incentive, does that mean the other 31 million part of the progress, have those projects all started? In other words, I'm trying to ascertain how many projects are just sitting for a long time with no progress and what is that dollar amount relative to those projects that have been awarded, but nothing's happening?
That, that, that information, we probably would have to take a look at all of the accounts and get back to you on that.
I think it's important, I think it's important because, you know, we have to know where we're going and we have to know how much we have, I mean, I, I, I just don't know. And I, I don't know if we are gonna say, folks, you need their, you either have to do something by X date or this funding is gonna be pulled because we could do something like, you just said, we need parking, build a garage, build. I mean, I really want to do something that's gonna help all of the projects that we've already done and it's a nice list. And we have products that have started, but I am also concerned about things like you just mentioned, parking. I, I think we could use a, I think we could use a really nice parking garage somewhere near Thrive Progresso to cover somewhere in the middle of the corridor. I mean, we've been talking about other things that are on the agenda, I don't know if we're gonna get to it, things like supermarkets, things like that whole list. But I just think we need to have a real handle on the dollar amount that is sitting there and not getting spent and probably will not get spent before November of 2025, that's all, I just wanna be able to wrap my head around that.
So this is, this is a conversation that we've had, you know, in the past and we continue to have. So we do have our finger on the pulse of the projects and where they are in, in, in the process of development. If you recall, last, at our last meeting, we took back $3 million from a proposed project that had been languishing. And, and we've identified that, you identified the project and we gave them some very specific deadlines as to how, how long they would still have in order to keep that money in their project. So we are aware of projects that are, that are languishing, we have a, a good feel for them. And there are some projects that we will at some point defund way before next year in November. But in having a feel for the projects, the majority of the projects that are in our pipeline, as we call it, are moving forward with good progress and they're spending money.
All right, good, I just think that's a real important exercise that we have to go through because we're gonna have to make some decisions. And I just think, I just think we need to be as educated as possible to know what kind of, you know, sources of funding we're talking about, how long we have and are any of these projects really going to happen or not? And then we just have to pull the trigger and figure out what else we can do to make sure we improve the, the corridor, that's all.
We can try to get you very specific information about, about some of the projects that are, have been awarded funding and the timing for where they are in the development process and, you know, at some point, we would pull the trigger and take that money back.
Including, including the date that they were awarded this funding, I'd like to be able to see how long has this been? That people have been funded and awarded.
Haven't we done this already? Didn't we, didn't we do that within the last year?
Yeah, yeah.
But, but we, but we need to do it again.
No, we have a project status report.
We need updates.
We, we do, we have a project status report that we provide to you.
And we gotta do it well before November of 25 because we need to reallocate that money, otherwise we'll lose it. So, so it's a good point and, and so maybe we need to revisit this issue in the spring of next year and see where we are with some of these projects because we need to, or get off the pot.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I want you, Mayor, to take off the maybe, we definitely need to do this in the spring or even earlier. But definitely taking the maybe off.
Okay, yeah. We'll, we'll provide you with the status report, which gives that information.
Thank you.
So that next, the next bullet, it talks about critical needs and one, one of the most pressing needs is the needs for, is the need for a supermarket, given the fact that, you know, the only supermarket that we had in the neighborhood, which probably wasn't adequate, it is no longer here. But we are in conversations with a developer that we are planning a large scale development. And, and if you allow me not to give too much detail at this point, but at some, at some point, we will be able to come to you with this project. As a matter of fact, there are a number of opportunities for supermarket. We're actually having to tell one potential developer, well, hold on, wait, because they have relationships that they can bring a supermarket into the neighborhood. So while we have none now, there is the possibility of maybe two or three.
This came up with the floods when I was dealing with Pam over a year ago. You know, giving vouchers for things and one of the things is vouchers for exactly, as you said, supermarkets. I think the closest one, there's a Publix on Davie and then the next one is all the way east on the other side of the track. Are those the nearest two supermarkets to this area?
Well, I think they're the Windex.
Walmart's closer than Davie.
Oh, that's right, there's Walmart on Broward now.
Walmart, you have Aldi's, you have Windex, some of those are probably closer.
A couple have come on board. A couple have come on board since.
But, but there is a robust effort on our, on our part to get a supermarket that is more than adequate in the neighborhood. And I think, once, once we have more information to be able to share, we'll do so. You know, these, these companies like to be quiet while they're doing their exploratory due diligence.
Yeah, but it is very important. I mean, it defines the community to a great extent, focal points, so I think it is a priority.
Yes. That next item, we talk about parking and transit alternatives. When we, when we, and I guess when we say transit alternatives, we're talking about objects like Circuit and other ways to move people around. But the parking situation, as I mentioned before, in all the developments that we're doing, we are providing funding for parking in those developments. And parking is extremely expensive. But you're going to see, you're going to see in a presentation coming up really soon, where we are looking at creating parking throughout the quarter on some properties that we've already identified. Some, some of these properties have surface parking, you know, and maybe the idea is to, instead of doing surface parking, maybe do some sort of garage. It might be expensive. We have contacted a, a company that builds garages, and we are in conversations with them. But again, we've identified some CRA properties where we've actually done surface parking, maybe turning that into garage, garage parking, and it would be paid. So while it may be an expense going in upfront, at some point, you know, it could potentially make its money back, or even if it doesn't make its money back, it can provide for the operations and maintenance of those garages. So we are looking at having a global parking plan for the quarter, and some of these other off-site developments where we believe there's going to be a lot of traffic and providing a way to allow for people to come into these areas and have parking.
Okay.
So if there's any questions about that.
Well, if we don't have any more questions, I'd like to shift the conversation now to what happens after November.
Wait, wait, wait.
But, but go ahead.
Wait my turn. Okay, I do have a question. Yeah, okay, thank you. Go back to slide four. But I do have, something caught my eye here.
Slide four?
On exhibit one, page four.
That's the one that has potential unfunded projects?
Correct.
On ours.
The one that has potential.
No, no, go, you're, go back to page, you're on six, go to four. Two pages back.
You move the order around, I think it's a little further down.
One more.
Potential unfunded projects?
There you go.
Keep going, keep going.
Keep going.
Keep going. There.
Yeah. No, no, that's it, that's it.
That's it, yeah.
Post office. CRA twelve million estimated project, one thirty million. What is, what's that post office project?
That's one of the ones that I was suggesting that we not talk too much about right now.
I mean, that caught my eye. I mean, how could we, that's jumping out there.
We can have a, if you don't mind, having a offline conversation?
You know, okay, just call my office, and we'll talk offline. That's fine, that's perfectly fine.
Okay.
Sure.
All right.
Okay, any other questions?
No question, just a few comments. I too appreciate how this board has been working, CRA advisory board, has been working so diligent to listen to the plans and those projects that's come before you and then before the commission. And I'm really excited that what I have on my list, you all really touched on in this presentation. Barbell housing, commercial business, the art and culture district, which I know we're going to see a presentation on, the public parking, we know that is what we need as well. And the supermarkets, the food chain, all of these are priority in our area for the CRA for funding. So thank you for what you're doing, and those of you who are not terming out, we are looking forward to.
Extending.
The CRA and your services to be continued. I always put my plug in for extending the CRA. Thank you.
I, I, I heard you, I think I know where you want us to go. If I can just move through just these last two bullets.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And then, because we'll have that, that discussion in a second. The additional entertainment and commercial development, one of, some of, some of the criticisms that we've been hearing is that we're, we're just doing a lot of housing development. We're doing a lot of housing, and it's not any commercial development or entertainment. What you, and, and you all know, because we came here last year, at our last year's workshop, and we talked about possibly codifying the quarter as our arts and culture quarter. So we've been working diligently in incorporating the creative communities in our redevelopment efforts. And to that point, the vision was to somehow create a quarter that would encourage cultural tourism. And when I came here, there was already a, a program. It was called Destination Sistrunk, young lady Grace Kuehl, who is here, and I'm going to ask her to come and stand next to me. That, that moniker, Destination Sistrunk, has been around, so we, we felt like as we start to transition and we start having development happen, you know, it's that old chicken of the egg thing, well, what do you bring first? You bring bodies, or you bring other things like jobs and all of that? So we've been working to do both. And Ms. Kuehl is, she works with the Broward.
County Cultural Division.
County Cultural Division. And I didn't want to just, you know, go and run with something that we were doing in, in a silo. I wanted to include her, because she's been here, she's been doing the work. And I'm going to let her just speak really quick and then show this one-minute video. Well, let's show the video, and then Ms. Kuehl will then speak to what we got going on.
Hi there.
Hi.
Hi. You want to please introduce yourself?
Oh.
I'm sorry. I got it, I got it remembered.
Okay, I thought she was going to.
Experience the future with Smart City Art, a visionary collaboration between Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights CRA and Broward County Cultural Division. Smart City Art furthers the Destination Sistrunk Cultural Heritage Initiative with sculptural digital interfaces that bring art to life, along with access and interactivity for residents, visitors, local businesses, and organizations. Fuel economic growth with free community Wi-Fi and shared revenue for interface locations. Explore heritage sites, local businesses, places of worship, and events. Immerse in digital art galleries and interactive maps. Five prototypes are expected to be installed at the following locations: Sistrunk Marketplace, Destination Sistrunk Cultural Center, Old Dillard Museum, L.A. Lee YMCA, Mizel Community Center, and the African-American Research Library and Cultural Center. Embrace the magic of Smart City Art, where technology and culture unite.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to be here, commissioners, general public. My name is Grace Kuldorphy. I'm the Director of Community Engagement for Broward County Cultural Division. I oversee our Destination Sistrunk Cultural Heritage Initiative, which was launched in 2017. Destination Sistrunk is a methodology and a model to demonstrate opportunities for transformation and economic growth within our historically black neighborhoods throughout Broward, through arts and cultural development, heritage and historic preservation, and tourism. So we've been working in the area for a number of years. We are comprised, the program area is from Thirty First Avenue to the Fat Village Railroad Tracks, FEC Tracks, Sunrise Boulevard to Broward Boulevard. So it is very unique in that the Sistrunk neighborhood, when we did our outreach years ago, people considered that the program area. So I love it because it covers two jurisdictions and gives great opportunity for us to celebrate the past, present, and future of the area. We also have a brick and mortar, the Destination Sistrunk Cultural Center, which is located at one zero three three Northwest Sixth Street in Fort Lauderdale. The building is owned by Cheryl Dickey, Dickey Consulting Services. The county has leased the building from her and operates the cultural center out of it. And our plans are to operate the entire facility. So they are great examples of how to support generational wealth building in, in our neighborhoods, oftentimes where people have to sell their property to experience stability and sustainability. Financially, we are coming in and we're creating partnerships so that people can have other ways to utilize their land through these methodologies. This particular project, so Clarence and I, we've been in communication for a number of years. He's been, he's doing his work, I've been doing my work over there. And one of the ways that we thought that we would be able to come together is through art and technology as a first step in developing a partnership. We love the Smart City Art project because it gives us an opportunity to really leverage cultural heritage, digital technology, economic access and equity, which is critically important, and its services, residents, and visitors as well. We know that our, in a lot of our neighborhoods, we do not have access to that type of interactivity. We do not have enough wayfinding so that people can find heritage sites. We do not have enough listings that people have access to, local businesses and restaurants, houses of worship that they are able to support. So we see this as a good vehicle to do this. It combines two aspects, the technological piece, which is like the large smartphone, that's great, they have them situated in other areas around the country. This is not like brand new, right? So they have the large pieces, they put wayfinding, they have connectivity. What they don't have is they don't have the public art aspect, and that's where we come in. You can put standard machines up, or you can add value to the experience for residents and visitors, and you can increase people's touring opportunities with these various prototypes. We'd like to see five more than one, but they actually become embedded as part of people's wayfinding experiences, people being able to feel comfortable being in a neighborhood, and people being able to experience aspects of the neighborhood in ways that they wouldn't before. So it's a really good connectivity. And again, we did a bunch of scanning, and I would like to give a shout out to Ellie Fendice of L.A. B Design, who's on board, helping us put all of these concepts together. So we did a bunch of research, we didn't find anything like ours, and we always talk about Fort, greater Fort Lauderdale, and Fort Lauderdale will be a world-class city. This is a way to be able to do it, and it's also a transformative way to be able to present this within our historically black neighborhoods. So there'll be shining lights, and even more of a spotlight will be on it. So we are very happy to be part of the project. We hope that you all will approve being able to move forward so that we can go back and have more conversations about being able to bring this to fruition. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, Grace. Couldn't have said it better myself. So what, what we're going to be coming to you and asking is for a pilot project. Grace talked about just the five smart screens that will allow for wayfinding signage, it would allow for you to go to that particular heritage spot. You'll be able to interact with that screen, it'll pop up and tell you all of the historic information about that particular spot. We call the, we call these different spots historic assets within the community. You're talking about the Yula Johnson House, you're talking about the YMCA where Providence Hospital was. So when you go and you interact with that screen, you'll be able to pull up a narrative, and it'll tell you exactly what happened, you know, with Providence Hospital. So in addition to wayfinding, it's also giving you some of the history about these different locations. I want to bring, bring up the, come on.
So how many, how many of these electronic kiosks are you looking to purchase?
As a pilot, five, and, and.
And how much should they each cost?
I think about thirty grand.
About thirty?
Yes.
Each?
Each.
So why don't we start out with one or two instead of five?
I mean, we'll, we'll, we're open to, but I wanted to allow you to see the technology and what it can do. I mean, obviously, we'll do whatever.
Because these were, these were suggested on Fort Lauderdale Beach as well. And again, I'm very concerned how people react to these things, whether they take advantage of them or whether they abuse them. I was concerned if we put it on Fort Lauderdale Beach, they may not last more than a year because people do funny things to things like this. They mark them up, they vandalize them, you know? I want to be sure that, you know, so, you know, we have to be sure that this is going to work, you know? I've seen, I've seen this in other cities, and I've seen mixed results. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Can you, let me see if I can roll it. Give your name and, go ahead and roll it.
Well, just while he's doing that, I'm Justin Gamage. I'm working with ProSense, the CRA, Destination Sistrunk on this initiative. What we're going to talk about more is just the technology component, but to address some of your concerns, one of the things we're really very keen on is ensuring there's an artistic component to what we provide to deter some of the things that you've mentioned in terms of risk to the, to the, to the devices themselves.
We're using the latest in AI, LiDAR, and 3D technologies to enhance our experiences in the real world. Meet my new friend. Hey, Coda, can you introduce yourself, please?
I'm your friendly neighborhood beer expert, here to help you with all your beer-related questions. How can I assist you today?
Coda, I'm having a barbecue this weekend, and we're serving chicken and dumplings. Can you recommend a beer that would pair nicely with that?
I would recommend Bud Light. It's a popular option that pairs nicely with most things.
Not only does Coda understand context to respond with a recommendation, but she can also lead me to the exact location of the product in the actual store.
So as she goes through this, imagine the same thing happening with the actual Sistrunk region. So rather than being a grocery store, you're actually going through the neighborhoods of Sistrunk, pointing them out to one of the dozen or so new restaurants that are popping up, based on the type of food someone might be interested in experiencing when they're visiting the area.
The store is currently running a special on barbecue chips, which will pair nicely with the chicken and dumplings, as well as the Miller Lite.
So part, part of that video actually had a, had a wayfinding feature which allowed people to experience walking through the grocery aisles, which would be very similar to what you'd experience walking through a city street, through different parts of the, of the community.
It's called meta-human now?
Digital human, yes. Similar. So one of the, one of the key components of, of the, of what we want to provide is the opportunity to engage the community in developing the, the digital humans, the digital avatars, and the content itself. So when people are experiencing the art, whether it's be looking for messages on new rental properties that will be coming available in the community, or if they're actually looking for something more tourist-like, where they're, where they're exploring where, I mentioned, the restaurant or artistic locations are, we, we have the, the folks through Destination Sistrunk involved in actually developing the content themselves. So some of these videos, the next video you can show, just gives you an example of how the digital avatars can be created, they can be modified, they can be, high school kids could be working on this, kids from colleges in the area and thinks it's nature. So it's a very flexible platform that we'll be working on implementing with the community.
Is he a meta-human?
He's a meta-human, yes, digital human, yeah. So it's a relatively easy interface, so part of, part of the development activity, both to be provide entertainment as, as, as the.
Soon will be made, soon these city commission meetings will be done through virtual reality.
One of the other features that we planned to incorporate is basically an app, an app that pairs with social media tools to provide people with the opportunity to sort of scan what the neighborhood would have looked like historically with, with their smartphones. This is just going to be a, a general feature that will be embedded within the project. And this is, basically, the, the deployment team is going to be involving Ad360 ProSense, a company called Zdata that is working closely with us at the University of Miami. And obviously, there'd be other folks from within the community, and. And obviously, there'd be other folks from within the community and other partners that will be looking at partnering with us. The plan is to have the actual systems and those screens with the art features in within about three to four months, and the first generation of the tools deployed within about a six-month timeframe based on the content creation requirements and things of this nature. So, thank you very much.
Sounds cool. Any questions with this gentleman?
Okay. Thank you, Justin, and the ProSense team.
How are these kiosks, how are they powered? And how long are they, the battery life of this whole technology opportunity?
The base units are powered with standard 110 power, so like a regular plug you would have for a computer or a toaster. Depending on the capabilities, it might require a bit of extra power. So, basically, a standard power supply would be required.
How does it play into our opportunity for Wi-Fi? Because we have a issue with broadband Wi-Fi in that it's definitely in the area of Providence Park. So, how does that play into making sure that these devices will be able to perform until we get the Wi-Fi that we need in the area?
Yeah, so there's provisions in these systems to be directly hardwired to the location that they're basically being mounted into. There are also some Wi-Fi capabilities that will be integrated that they can tap into as needed, depending on the location that they're installed.
City manager, we got to get that Wi-Fi.
On the list, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clarence, just one question. So, let me ask you this, and this might actually be a better question for Grace. Now that we're talking about, and I love this direction, I love the direction of cultural heritage, cultural heritage tourism, but because we're bringing in that component now, will we be working, when you put this plan together for us for approval, will we be working with Visit Lauderdale that will be able to actually promote the tourism portion of this project? Because obviously, County Cultural Division and Visit Lauderdale are both county agencies. So, will we be getting that support from Visit Lauderdale to push this?
Visit Lauderdale's family, that's our intention. We wanted to, we came together at our levels, and with how you all decide to proceed, then it's around bringing everyone, all the other internal partners to the table. But that's always a given for us.
Okay, great. Obviously, it's so important, and they have the marketing, and they promote the area. So, I think it would be great, I think it would be a natural, and I think it's terrific. Grace, thank you for your work on this. Nice to see you.
Commissioners and Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor, again, this was just the CRA reaching out to Broward County Cultural Affairs Division because they were already in the neighborhood doing the work. We do anticipate, you know, bringing in any and everybody that could potentially bring resources and, you know, some energy and effort into helping us to use the creative industries in sparing our economic development efforts. So, we want to include everybody.
Excellent. Thank you.
So, that last bullet talks about partnership with property owners. Obviously, there's still a lot of vacant land throughout the quarter, and our desire is to, you know, work with anyone that is willing to kind of help us to transform the community into that vision that we all think that the Sistrunk Quarter can be a cultural arts Mecca, entertainment Mecca. So, that's just there. We've had conversations about, when I say we, I'm talking about the advisory board, conversations about opportunities that are still there to be able to do more. So, we do want to be inclusive of anybody that has land and are willing to join us. Mr. Mayor, you were talking about what's going to happen after November.
Before you do that, what is this?
Oh, that's, no, no, that's just a depiction of parking and how you can use the app to kind of.
Okay, I thought we were building a stadium in the northwest.
No, how you can use the app, how you can use the app to navigate around.
Okay.
And Clarence, let me, maybe I'll start as far as next steps, and you can finish up as far as what happens. So, the staff was planning on bringing it back as part of our goal-setting process in January, and that's also the kick-off for the budget season. So, to have that discussion in the context of that was the plan.
Okay, all right.
So, you talked about what's next after November.
Is there life after CRA?
Well, there has to be. It has to be. So, that's why we included Invest Fort Lauderdale. And as you know, we've mentioned before, we're having some challenges with the 501(c)(3), so we have to reorganize our organization. And we're having some conversations with the attorney, the city attorney, Lynn, I'm sorry. And we're looking at different ways where we can bring about the separation while still having some oversight. And there are some thoughts, I think I mentioned it before, but Invest Fort Lauderdale is going to be critical because if we look at the CRA and what the CRA is charged to do, the elimination of slumming light, basically, infrastructure and brick and mortar development, when we start to talk about having, you know, art and entertainment and all of those other things that kind of give life to the brick and mortar, that actually breeds life into all of these, you know, buildings that we're erecting, art in that community, again, is what actually brings life. So, Invest Fort Lauderdale, as an organization, can help to do some of those things. As we were just talking about, the CRA is prohibited from doing events. Invest Fort Lauderdale potentially can do events and can partner in bringing some of these type of activities into the neighborhood. So, that's why we need to reorganize Invest Fort Lauderdale and do it right away because they would probably be the arm of the CRA that could continue working to bring the creative communities into the neighborhood.
Clarence, what's the status of that? I know you've mentioned this to us before about a little bit of a bump in the road with regards to the 501(c)(3) status, but where are we? And how much of a challenge is that? Are we going to be able to resolve this and get going, or where are we at this?
So, again, we need to have the conversation because I know that there's a desire to make sure the money's directed and spent the way in which, you know, it's intended. And the thought was having board members that were appointed by members of our Board of Commissioners.
When we created Invest Fort Lauderdale, when did we create that? 2020, 21?
I don't remember.
When we created that, I thought we did appoint people, but maybe not. We did appoint people. So, who's, I'm just getting this sense that this is just sort of languishing out there? Like, so, city attorney's office, your office, who's on top of this? Who's on top of getting the 501(c)(3) status?
We are.
Who's on top of establishing this? What's the timeline? When is this happening so that we're ready, if we need be, to just move forward? Where are we with this?
So, we are, as I mentioned, Lynn and I are working to come up, we're in the process of redoing the bylaws and the articles. In doing the bylaws and the articles, you have to name your board members. So, if they're not going to be appointments by the Board of Commissioners, then we need to, we need to get an okay from you all that it's okay to do that.
But what's the status of the people that we've already appointed? Are they still appointed?
We only have three right now that are remaining, three appointees. We still need to get two others.
So, why is that not an agenda item for us to appoint these people? Or why aren't we filling that?
So, as we go forward, we have an opportunity now to add two others or just reconstitute the board because those other three, which would be a majority, were appointed by the Board of Commissioners.
I understand. I'm just getting the sense that, you know, months go by so quickly. This is our last meeting until August 20th. These months are flying. I just want to feel comfortable, and I know that we're doing this, and I need to hear from the city attorney's office that this is a priority, that this is moving forward, and that we're figuring out what we're doing with Invest Fort Lauderdale.
So, we're going to come back with a proposed solution that would not have a majority member appointed from the board. We will make some suggestions as to how we can still have that oversight without it being five members appointed from the board. We just wanted to have this conversation, let you know where we're moving in doing the reconstitution of the organization.
When do you see that happening?
I got to check with Lynn to see, you know, she's already started. She's already started doing that. But I'll find out exactly when she anticipates having the reconstituted articles of incorporation and bylaws.
We don't reconvene until August 20th, but could you maybe, when you find that out, shoot us all an email and let us know the status of where everything is?
Absolutely.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. So, I think that we probably need to have another conversation regarding what's going to happen after the CRA sunsets. But before the commission does that, I would encourage the CRA Advisory Board to have workshops within the community and to reach out and see what are the goals of the community. Where, having seen what we've done so far, you know, what's next? What can we accomplish? What types of things, you know, what should be the boundaries? You know, keeping in mind that Flagler Village has, for many, many years, funded the CRA before the Northwest took off. But can the Northwest now sustain itself with sufficient TIF money? I mean, these are the questions that need to be asked, and if we do include Flagler Village, it means we're also going to have to be able to spend money there, too.
Absolutely.
Right? So, these are the kinds of questions I'd like to have the advisory board reach out to the community. One other thing I wanted to say, and this is something of the young lady from the county, yeah, you.
Thanks for the yawn.
Yeah. That's Grace. Not to be patronizing, but I heard the boundaries that you mentioned as to where you would like to focus, but keep in mind, Sistrunk Boulevard goes all the way to Federal Highway. And, you know, there was a reason for that, and that was to be inclusive of neighborhoods that weren't just part of the original traditional, you know, so-called Sistrunk neighborhood. It was intended to include multiple neighborhoods. So, keep that in mind as, you know, as you're programming your ideas, because I think that's important to keep that in mind. So, we probably should plan to revisit this conversation after the advisory board has had this opportunity. Does that make sense to everybody? Yes, actually, if I might make a suggestion, because I've been speaking also to a lot of folks on the Budget Advisory Board, is there a possibility of this CRA board meeting with our Budget Advisory Board, which is going through a very strenuous exercise right now in terms of future budget? I mean, I think they would have a great conversation. I think it's important that these two boards meet and just have that conversation about where we're going in the future. I think we could benefit by that kind of a meeting between the two advisory boards, actually. Okay. All right, so, something to work on for after the break? And we'll revisit that. Any other questions that the commission has of Clarence? There being none. Anyone from the board have any other questions or comments they'd like to make? Welcome. Just to say thank you. Thank you to Clarence, thank you to the board for all of your work. Thank you. Okay. All right, so that, this meeting is now concluded. Thank you.